Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the December 6, 2021 work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have several items on the agenda this evening, and we're going to start off with the presentation of the FY '21 audit. Finance Director Keith Cordery will lead us and introduce our guests.
Good evening, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, we're going to hear the audit report from Tim Sawyer of Barbara King-Thornton, and he's on the Zoom call, ready to go. So I'll turn it over to Tim.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Jack. Good afternoon, everybody. Let me say, if you would be possible to share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to do that.
You see the City of Salisbury, Maryland audit report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, hey, we're going to go over the audit report. I'm going to not sit here and go page by page, but kind of hit on some highlights for you. So I will let you know for the audit, as I kind of page down to the beginning here. We did do the audit remotely. Our field work was done in October and November, and based on our field work, as we get into the audit report here, and you can see the opinion section, we're prepared to issue unmodified or clean audit opinions on your different opinion units, which are your governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund of the city, as well as the aggregate remaining fund information, or what that refers to is your non-major funds and your fiduciary funds, as well as the report on internal control or financial reporting and on compliance, as well as the report on compliance for each major program related to your single audit. So it's going to be a clean audit. One thing I do want to point out here is we have this emphasis of matter paragraph here. This is just alerting you to there's a new Government Accounting Standards Board statement on number 84 called fiduciary activities. It was a minor change that was needed to the statements for this year based on this. It just required actually an additional statement or statement page, if you will, showing the activity for those fiduciary funds, and I'll touch on that when we get back there and go over that a little bit as well. But it was nothing that the city was doing wrong, it's just a new accounting standard that had to be implemented this year. I'm going to skip the section here that shows pages five through 12, which are the MDNA, and I'm going to just kind of jump right into the statements. The MDNA just kind of gives you a narrative of the actual statements, and we go through -- that's written by Keith and his team, and we go through and we look at the numbers and make sure they agree to the statements, and of course, they do. If I'm looking here at your statement in that position, this is what we refer to, this is your government-wide statements or full accrual. So the difference between these and the fund level, which we'll go over in a little bit, for the government activities, the difference is, here you'll see your fixed assets and your debt on the statements, whereas in the fund level, any expenditures for capital acquisitions or capital outlay are expenditures, as well as debt service payments, interest and principal payments show up as an expenditure, and if you issue new debt, that shows up as another financing source. But on the statement in that position here, that's shown on the, you know, the statement, it's akin to a balance sheet if you're looking at a for-profit company. So if we're looking at these, I can tell you here, we just put on a couple of numbers here. So for your cash and investment pool here is 22 million. Last year it was 18. The restricted cash, which is down here, this first line here, was 18 million this year. Last year it was 29, and some of that just had to do with you had restricted money that was set aside for capital improvements, and as you spent some of that money this year, those cash balances did go down. Overall, your receivables, your taxes receivable, accounts receivable, and your due from other governments, last year they were 9.9 million, this year they're 8.2 million, so you've collected an additional 1.7 million on those receivables also that kind of help out with your cash flow. We look at your non-current assets here, if we were to back out the restricted cash and just look at your fixed assets, so your capital assets or fixed assets, net of depreciation, were 195 million last year, they're 198 million this year. So if you were never to add any additional assets, that number would continuously go down as we take the depreciation each year, and the depreciation is just a smoothing of the acquisition cost of those assets over their useful life. So for example, a building is an item that is like a 40-year item, so we amortize that cost over 40 years. If you're looking at, you know, like a truck or something like that, or other office equipment, you're talking maybe five, 10 years, and we take that, you know, one-tenth or one-fifth of the item each year as depreciation. On the liability side, if we go down, your liabilities, the big one here is your bonds and notes and capital lease payable, and spoken into two sections, the current portion is what's due next year, and then your long-term portion down here, what's due over the remaining, you know, life of the loan. So if we're looking at those, your bonds and notes payable and all, you were at 198 million. I've got some other numbers in there, I'm sorry. You had 3.9 is your current, and then your total, my long-term is 27, so you're about 30, 31 million dollars. There's more information on the debt in note six, which I'm going to hit on later, as well as the capital assets we talked about, they were in note five, so we'll hit those and give you a little more detail on those two numbers. So overall, though, your total net position is 81.8 million dollars. Last year it was 84, so you are down about 2.5 million dollars, but some of that also has to do with when we do the adjustments for the pension, and it's an additional expense that's not a cash outlay, if you will, that you see on the fund level. This is your statement of activities, so overall, here you can see between the two, the governmental activities and the business-type activities, the governmental activities is basically almost at a break-even point here, so you had $108,000 is your change in net position, or, you know, where your revenues exceeded expenditures. On the business activity side, it was about a $2.7 million decrease. Just to point out that of that, you know, 2.7, your depreciation was like $5 million, so most of that is, you know, what we would consider a non-cash-related item, even though it's an expense and drives that net position number down. This next page here, this is your balance sheet of your governmental funds, so like I said here, so this does not have any of the debt or the fixed assets on it, so you can see that you're at about $30 million total assets between the general, the capital improvements, and your non-major funds, and your liabilities are 3.2, and your unavailable revenue is, you know, related to taxes receivable, that's about 2.5. So overall, your fund balance is 24 million. Last year it was 24.8, this year it's 24.4, so you're down about 400,000. You have some of the fund balance, if we're looking at the fund balance, you know, your biggest change in between these numbers here is your restricted, which last year was 10.3 million, this year it's 6.5, so it's down about 3.7, and again, that has to do with some of the money that was restricted for capital assets that was used, and then your unassigned, which is available for any purpose, that went from 9.7 roughly last year to 12.6. So that, while that number, your restricted went down, the unassigned went up, so overall, you only had about a $400,000 decrease in your fund balance. This is just a reconciliation between the fund level and government-wide or full accrual level, I'm not really going to spend much time on that, unless you have any questions. This is your statement of changes in fund balance, so this will show you your revenues and expenditures. So you're at overall revenue of about 48 million, taxes obviously being the biggest piece of that. Last year you were at 44.7, this year you're 48.1, so about a $3.3 million increase. Just about all of that is in the intergovernmental revenue, which was up about 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollars, mainly related to funding received related to COVID and federal funds. The expenditures, you were at 49 million. Last year you were at 50.9 million, so you were down about 1.7 million overall in expenditures. The biggest decrease there was in your capital outlay. Last year you had about $9.2 million of expenditures, this year you're at the 5,076,000. This statement here reconciles your change in fund balance compared to your change at the government-wide level. So these are the items that do not appear, you know, at the fund level that are in the other number. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to go over that, otherwise I'm not going to spend much time on that, a lot of accounting jargon. Your statement of net position here for the proprietary funds, this is the water sewer, also reflects Mitchell Landing, and then your non-major funds, which of course are the three, excuse me, the three non-major funds you have there are the City Marina, the Parking Authority, and the Stormwater. They're combined into one column here. So overall, here, if we're looking at, and these numbers are in the government-wide as well, they just flipped through, so just pointing out here that, you know, you're in good position, Water and Sewer's got a 72 million, almost 73 million in that position, and all your other funds are 3.2. Mitchell Landing is the one that's got just a small deficit, kind of deficit for several years now. Looking at the statement of activities for your proprietary funds, here overall, you're at, you know, if we're looking, you know, Mitchell Landing and the non-major really have minimal activity, as you can see, and they kind of balance each other out, so Water and Sewer is obviously the big one. You're at 16 million in operating revenues compared to 16 and a half last year. The expenditures last year were 12 million, this year to 13 and a half. The depreciation, it was 4.7, this year, last year was 4.6. When we look at your non-operating revenues and non-operating expenses, which the non-operating expenses is basically just the interest, non-operating revenues last year were 798, this year they're only, they're 400,000, 500,000, and the interest expense last year was 579, this year it's 520, just in the Water and Sewer Fund. So that was the big decrease there is the 2.3 million, and like I said before, you had 4.7 here in depreciation, which is really like a non, you know, it's a non-cash outlay item, just as you're recognizing those costs. So we went from 75 down to 72 for the Water and Sewer Fund, and overall, from 78 to 75 million for the enterprise funds as a total. So your statement of cash flow, so it just shows you the ins and outs of the cash, so overall, your net change in cash for the year for, related to the enterprise funds, was about a $7 million decrease, and, you know, a lot of that has to do with the two big things here, your principal payments on your bonds, which are 4.5 million, and then payments for capital acquisitions, almost 7 million. So there's 11 million of that 7 million is the money going out for those two items. These are the fiduciary funds, this statement here is a statement of net position for these. These did not change any as they've been reported in the prior years. The change here is we added, had to add this statement, which shows the changes in those funds, so you have to report the additions and the deductions for these funds this year, so it's just a summary of where the money and, you know, the changes came in. So you can see here, we talk about contributions from police, that's confiscated money, the Bay Restoration Funds that come in, and then money that went out from the confiscated funds, as well as the Bay Restoration going out, and then obviously the healthcare trust activity, nothing changed in that column. It was the custodial funds column that was, that GASB 84 that I had mentioned before that we had to include this year that we had not in the past. So into the footnotes, note one and note two are pretty much boilerplate, note two is just going over all your accounting policies. Note five, I had mentioned before, this was your capital assets, so this shows your changes in capital assets from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, gives you a little more detail of where the additions and the deletions were. So you can see during the year, you know, we added, there was some land that was added, and then your construction in progress was 15 million, we added another 2.9 million. There was 10 million that went into service this year, so it was a project that was complete, but you still have 7.9 million in construction in progress at the end of the year, and then obviously the big increase was in the improvements, non-b buildings went from 19.8 up to 30 million because of that 10 that was put in place this year. We also have the Water and Sewer Fund here, so you can also see here, we had 3.7 million in construction in progress at the beginning of the year, we added 8 million. There were some deletions as we cleaned up some of the items that were not going to be capitalized, and we had 1.1, 1.2 million dollars of those assets here in the transfer column that went into service this year. So there's your big change in the Water and Sewer was in the construction in progress related to different improvement projects that were going on. It also has activity for the other funds, but there's not much of any activity in those. Note six is your debt, so this is the big one here, it shows your activity in the debt, so it'll show your bonds, and there are premiums on the bonds, as well as the capital lease acquisition or obligation, excuse me. And so you can see, we did add to the capital lease, but then we also, you know, just made some payments, so you had 33.9 million in debt at the beginning of the year, we added 1.4, made payments of 3.8, and then the amortization on the bond premium, so at the end of the year, in the general fund, you're at 31.5 million in debt, then obviously the pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as your compensated absences add to that total for 91 million. On the business-type activities, so the Water and Sewer Fund, basically here you had 69.8 million in general obligation bonds, small addition there, and we ended up with 4.3 in payments, so you're now down to 65.6 million in bonds payable, and 5.8 of that is due next year. The mortgage here, this 1.3, that's related to Mitchell Landing, and that doesn't change. And then there is also a capital lease obligation for your business type, went from 600 in payments down to 440. So overall, in the business-type activities, you were at 73 million, and now you're at And these next pages here, if you go through them, I'm not going to go through them, but they detail out the different bond issues and note issues, and then you come back to the totals again that were on the previous page that we talked about. And here are your principal maturities, so according to the standards, we're required to show the next five years individually, and then in five-year increments after that. So you can see on the governmental activities, currently to pay off that 26.8 million dollars, along with the 4.5 in interest on it, you have payments going out until the year 2035. And on the business type, the 69 million in principal maturities will take you out through This is note seven, shows you just the composition of the pension liabilities and deferred inflows and outflows. This, even though, you know, the town does, go ahead and, excuse me, the city, you know, makes the contributions and all, when we're looking at what the reliability is and are, these are done by an actuary and their valuation, so they're the ones that come up with the calculations and those, and then we go ahead and based on their valuation report, take a look at that and see what the differences are and what the deferred inflows and outflows that need to be reported, and then we assist with that entry that books this liability at the end of the year on your statements. If we go through the rest of the notes, nothing spectacular as we're going through the notes. This is your fund balance, when we were talking about your fund balance before and your different categories, so if you're looking at non-spendable means that the money has basically already been spent, and it consists of inventory and prepaid items. Then we notice you have, you know, your restricted for the capital assets, your committed funds, and there are different allocations of what they are, and then we have a couple assigned as well, take you into the next year, you know, for your encumbrances, and your unassigned, which I had mentioned before, at 12.6 is available for any use of the city as we go forward into the next year. So those are the, you know, the major pieces of the statement. You know, it's also as part of the audit, you know, I mentioned that we assist with the GASB entries for the pension and other post-employment or OPEB liabilities. We also take a look at your internal controls, you know, your cash receipts, cash disbursements, and payroll cycles, make sure that the controls are designed and operating effectively there. This year we did a, you know, kind of on a rotating basis, we look at those cycles in-depth a little bit more, and we did a sample for payroll, as well as water and sewer billings this year, and I'm glad to tell you that we noted no issues with the samples that we tested. That's not to say that we don't look at any expenditure transactions, but when we do those samples for the internal controls, we're looking just at the internal controls and on a sample of those transactions. We'll look at the, since like this year we didn't do the sample on the expenditures, we do look at expenditure transactions, and while we're doing other parts of the audit, and we'll look at the controls also to make sure that they're operating effectively when we look at those. While that being said, we are also going, you know, we're on target to issue the final report on next Monday. Somebody have something or question?
No, there was a cloth.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just heard something, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. Does anybody on council have a question on the financial statements or the?
Yeah, I think I heard the word "clean," correct?
Yeah, I heard that.
Correct. Unmodified or clean, yes.
So that's how many years in a row? Since I've been on the council?
I was going to say it's been since I've been involved, which is probably...
Six, five or six?
At least five or six, probably even more than that. Might be eight or nine.
That's good. I do have a couple of questions. Anybody, first, anybody else have a question on it?
For Keith, so the unassigned balance where it's at 12.6 million, how much, how many months is that for us now? Does that put us comfortably in that three-and-a-half to four-month range that we always talk about?
It would put us well above our target, but...
We'll have our normal discussion.
Coincidentally, today, as you know, we're, we've had some projects and programs that we've been holding back, and knowing that we have an abundance now of unassigned surplus, we wanted to put some of that to work for us today in a budget ordinance. We'll use some of that. But it is worth mentioning, that's the number that we pay the most attention to, and it went from 9.7 to 12.
To 12.
So a $3 million bump, which is, that number we pay a lot of attention to, and coincidentally, just about all of the excess revenues on the statement that describes the general funds, revenues over expenses, was about 3.2 million, so it landed in the right place.
Right, it wasn't a big difference between the two.
It didn't get committed to other uses. And the other number, because we budget the general fund, so that means we had a $3.2 million excess revenues, and we budget Water and Sewer, but it wasn't as good. So it's important to note that there was about 2.2 million, and we'll put all of this under a microscope when we do the financial health, and look at comparisons and focus on all of the components of those, because we may need to look at our Water and Sewer operation. But it is worth mentioning, Tim pointed out, a half million dollars, 500,000 was due to a revenue falloff. Well, that had to do with COVID, the usage was down. And then another thing that happened was, we had some construction in process that was on the balance sheet because it wasn't done, and our Department of Infrastructure and Development got a lot of projects done, some of them didn't qualify to go to the asset pool because they didn't meet the threshold for capitalizing. So we had a little more, about 1.5 million dollars of construction in process went to expense. So the combination of those two things helped bring that number to 2.2 million dollars of loss.
Anything else? Just one technical item. I heard that the depreciation is based on the life of the item, right? So I'm assuming then that on a ladder truck, for instance, versus a chief's car, the life is significantly less on a ladder truck. Are we making those assumptions when we do the depreciation?
Yes, we get the useful life. We collaborate with the department to get the correct useful life.
Good, because an item like that, that's a big number.
Yes.
For the ladder truck, for the chief's car.
Yeah.
Not so much.
Just to be sure, I'm not sure Tim was through, were you through, Tim, with your presentation, or did you?
Yeah, no, yeah, I was ready for any questions, so.
He's asking questions.
Here's in your footnote on the depreciable assets, so these are the lives based on your broad categories of assets, depending on what's in here, so, you know, so if you were looking at, you know, like I said, we're saying like a building, you know, some of the items within the buildings are 10 years, but the buildings themselves would be 40 years, as if you were looking at, you know, the machinery or equipment like the police chief's car or something, that's more, you know, when you're looking at police cars, five-year type life of an asset, as you're amortizing those costs.
Okay, thank you. Based on this, I think I can say that every year, we, this is one of the things maybe most people don't look forward to, but we certainly do, and we appreciate the work that's done by Keith and his group. I think I've mentioned before that I can't, I think I had a clean audit on my business once, and I think it was the year that I was on sabbatical, but that's okay. A job well done, and please let your staff know that we appreciate that, and honestly, we look forward to the budget preparation, and I can't believe we're saying we're going to be looking at the budget in several months, and that will hopefully go as smoothly as this, so, thank you. Thank you, Tim, very much.
Thank you. I also wanted to point out that Joe Manfree was here with me today, he was the supervisor on the audit and worked, you know, with Keith and Olga and Sandy in the finance office, and, you know, they were very forthcoming and very quick when we would, you know, request information as far as loading it up into our portal. And I did want to mention one other thing that I forgot to mention earlier, was that, you know, we had no audit adjustments as part of the audit, so it's always good to point that out as well.
Yes. Yes, it is. Thank you, Joe, for your, for your help, too.
Problem?
Okay. Thanks very much, Keith. Take my glasses off.
Other questions, I'm gonna turn back, stop sharing my screen and turn your control back over to you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have a budget.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, have a good one. We have a budget ordinance to appropriate funds from GOCCP Youth and Victim Services Grant. Colonel Munch, I don't see Colonel.
He's on.
Oh, he's on there?
Yeah, there he is.
Where is he?
He's at the PD.
Oh, I see him. Let me put my glasses on so you can see. Colonel, the floor is yours.
Colonel Weinshine, can you hear us?
Says, I think I'm on mute.
Can you get him off mute?
Hi, folks.
Colonel, how are you?
Sorry about that.
That's all right, we were trying to read lips, but we weren't, it wasn't working well.
Yeah, sorry. Just to make sure that I'm on the same page, this is the, this is the seventy-five thousand hours to the target grant, community grant?
Yes.
Okay.
No, this is the GOCCP Youth and Victim Services Grant.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Got my wires crossed. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so this is, this is a grant through the Government's Office of Crime Prevention for twenty thousand dollars for, it's for a, in this particular case, it was written for gym memberships for our sworn personnel. If, as you may recall, last year and the year before, this grant was written for a monetary, it was more or less a bonus, I call it a bonus, it was more of a retention of monetary, a small monetary amount that was given to the officers, they had to sign a one-year contract for, to remain with the city. In this particular grant, it's the same grant, the only difference is we couldn't write it for the same purpose, so it had to be written for something different, and one of the things it could be written for was a gym membership, and that's what we wrote it for this year, and what we want to do is also have this apply for our officers that are existing officers, as well as any new hires between now and June thirty.
Questions or comments?
See, Mr. Tucker's back corner, so in six months' time, you should be beach-ready.
Okay. We'll skip right over that. Any other questions or comments? I think this is, this is a good thing, for sure, and do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Okay, we, Julie, please make sure it's on the agenda. Okay. Next up, do we have, we have another one for, no, this isn't, there's no more for Chief, for the Colonel. Okay. Thank you, Colonel, appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Next, we have a ordinance to establish Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service Tax Credit. Nate's gonna handle us through that one?
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
So before you today is the administration's request for an ordinance establishing Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Tax Services Tax Credit, and you have my memo before you. Essentially, this is one of the last legislative components that I've worked on pertaining to the Here Is Home announcement that Mayor Day had on September twenty-ninth, which was his multi-pronged visionary approach to expanding the housing stock in Salisbury, and so the ordinance before you would create this real property tax credit for properties owned by SNHS that are not, non-administrative buildings. This is very similar to the Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit that we signed in, that the mayor signed into law last month. The, the only difference lies in the enabling legislation, so just that legal vehicle through which we're able to accomplish, you know, bringing this tax credit to fruition, but other than that, it's modeled in the same fashion as ordinance twenty-six eighty-nine, which you, which you passed last month, and as you may see in my memo, the fiscal note of bringing this to effect is relatively negligible, just, just shy of two thousand dollars annually, based on data that SNHS provided us, and then once the properties are rehabilitated, we anticipate that, you know, their property value will increase, therefore increasing the taxable base once they're put back on the tax rolls following their rehab period. And I'd be happy to offer any additional insight or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nate. Questions or comments?
I appreciate the addition of fiscal notes to some of these, that's, that's very helpful when looking at these.
And they are an estimation, but based on data we receive.
Yes, Michelle, April. Another piece of the puzzle.
Yes, indeed.
We're getting, we're moving along, so it's good news, and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, I know Cheryl's gonna be very appreciative, so that's great. We have consensus then to move this forward. Julie, please put it on the agenda. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a resolution approving an MOU with Eastbound Disc Golf, the Department of Infrastructure Director, Amanda Pollak. You get off easy tonight, you only have, you only have one.
Two.
Two?
I'll stay up here for a little.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
First item is to talk about an MOU with Eastbound Disc Golf, so first I'll have everyone introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Sean Johnson, Vice President of Eastbound Disc Golf.
And I'm Paul Whitney, Project Manager of Eastbound Disc Golf.
David Lotz, the Chair of the City's Parks and Rec Committee.
Thanks, David.
So Eastbound Disc Golf came and met with the Parks and Rec Committee on November tenth, and I had the pleasure of attending that meeting, and they presented some concepts for two disc golf courses that they'd like to do in the city park, and having a disc golf course is in the adopted city park master plan, so it's been something we've been hoping to do for quite some time. So the first step for us is to prepare an MOU and really establish responsibilities between the city and Eastbound Disc Golf, and if you recall, we have similar MOUs with the Mountain Biking Association. So this MOU essentially lays out that Eastbound Disc Golf would design the course, they'll obtain all the necessary permits, they will come back to the Parks and Rec Commission and present it in great detail, and we'll talk about it, and then submit it to the Infrastructure and Development Department, they will supervise all the volunteers during construction, they'll oversee maintenance of the course, and they will install all the signs, but essentially, it will be a city-owned facility, it'll be located on city lands in our park, so we will review the design, we'll help with implementation, encourage the police patrols of the courses as they do in the city park, and we will authorize them to build and maintain the course. So just a real quick overview, they are proposing to construct two courses, so the city does not have any disc golf, the county has a course in Shoemaker Park.
Shoemaker.
And that's an intermediate level course, so one of the courses they're proposing is called the Chris Roberts Memorial Course, and that would be a beginner level course, and it's located north of the zoo between Memorial Plaza Drive and Beaver Dam Drive, so it would, it would start on the Memorial Plaza Drive and go out towards the old softball fields and then back. We've taught, we talked a lot at the Parks and Rec Committee about how that would interact with the urban greenway, and certainly the urban greenway would still be usable, no one would ever be throwing into the urban greenway blindly, they would be able to see where people are walking, and really, tee boxes would be located such that they're throwing away from the river, so discs aren't going into the river, and no trees would be removed to do that course. So we've talked a lot about that one, I think that one's closer for them to be able to do because they do have a donor that fully funded that course. The second course is called Papa Bear's Run, and that would be located in the wooded areas around the Scout Field off of North Park Drive, so that would be a top-level challenging course, so it would complement the other two courses nicely, especially if there's other tournaments in the area. So that's a course that's still a work in progress, there's gonna be fundraising that's going on to do that course. So essentially, what you have before you is a resolution, a resolution and the MOU, and so the resolution would be to accept the terms of the MOU and let us proceed through the process. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to share or add?
Questions or comments?
Just want to say, was, worked with Chris for a few years on committee, great guy, he loved disc golf, so very, very appropriate naming that after him. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just, just a question, just the second, the second design, that's mainly in the wooded area, so it's not like impacting people who walk dogs and stuff?
Not no longer, greenway.
Okay.
And, and so really, we, we do need to make sure that, that the courses will coexist with people that are already using the park. We'd even talked about where people fish for trout and just making sure we're not disturbing them, so we're very conscious of other people that are using the park areas.
Any other questions?
I don't know, I'm just saying it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
I'm assuming the trees are like the sand traps. I got that, see? I get the concept, which, which I will, if I play, will be hit quite frequently. So this is similar, you mentioned, this is similar to the one we did at the, by the complex.
Exactly. Yeah, we actually have two with the mountain bikes, we have one down in the city park and one up.
And we also have one for the skate park with some, don't we have an agreement with that?
Boulder County has one that I think goes, is it out there, does it go out that way? Under the county has one as well.
Okay, okay.
That goes through their, their park.
I was there when, the reason I ask if it's gonna be dog walking, my dogs ended up with two Frisbees this past weekend.
Retriever, you have retrievers.
Yeah, they ended up with two, well, they were, you know, they were from a distance, and they were tossing it, and I had been walking my puppies, and they got clipped, so, but it all worked out, they helped collect them, and it was all fine.
Okay, we have consensus to move it forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Your dog should be the mascot, Angela.
Right, right.
Okay, Julie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now, you do have another. Now, we're also gonna get a, oh yeah, this I remember going over, this is good news. I'm not gonna take your thunder. This is very good news. Amanda, let's tell us about the update from the Home Housing Expansion Incentive Program.
Hey, so I'm here for your first update for Here Is Home. As you know, you all passed the ordinance just on November eighth, so it's been a little bit less than a month since the ordinance has been active. So it's funny, when I wrote the memo, you know, things are due for your package a week in advance, and so it's already obsolete, and so I think every time I come before you, you'll have what, what was, you know, submitted, and then I can tell you what we've received to date. So we've received one more, we've received six total applications, so total, the number of residential units is now eight hundred and seventy-six, which is great. There are still probably a dozen of other projects that I've spoken with in the last few weeks that are in the process of submitting, so I will come back before you again in early January, early February, and then after the, the application period ends, which is the end of February, and give you another update. But, so right now, the number of units by unit type, we have a hundred and seventy-two single-family units, two hundred and sixty duplexes, three hundred and eight townhouses, a hundred and one apartments, and then the new project was thirty-five assisted living and memory care unit, units, so that is significant. And again, just for, for those who are not as familiar with Here Is Home, a huge part of this incentive program is that this has to be done timely, so they had to submit their application and have the agreement signed by the end of next February, they have to have pulled their building and site permits by the end of February of 2023, they have to break ground by October of 2023, and if it's a multifamily-type project, like the apartments and townhomes, the certificates of occupancy have to be granted by June thirtieth, 2025, and for single-family, June thirtieth, 2027. So that is a lot of units already coming, and like I said, there's a few more that I've spoken to, so I think it's, it's pretty much every day you ask, I can almost give you a different number, is how it's been going so far.
Yeah, the last time we talked, a couple days ago, was one less.
Yes, yes.
Fantastic.
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, were there any of those that were designated for low-income housing?
That is a good question. I do not believe so, no, none, none of these that have applied so far have been designated for low-income housing or affordable housing at this point.
None of them have been designated, but I will tell you, it will definitely have an impact on the renters, because competition does amazing things.
Sure.
And when the market changes and you have more pressure, then we'll start to see maybe some declines in, in the rent that some of these people have to pay. So I think that we're still gonna accomplish what we need to, but we also have to work on the low-income housing. Questions or comments? That's fantastic, thank you. Appreciate the update. Okay, next up, we have a budget ordinance to use surplus funds for programs and projects.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Glanz, good afternoon.
So as Keith hinted earlier during the audit presentation, there is a surplus that we have realized over the last few years, and we would like to put that money to work now. We would like to reduce the burden on the upcoming FY23 budget and address immediate needs that we have throughout the city. Some of the projects included in this budget amendment have been included in the CIP for a number of years, some of them have been budget requests that have been unfulfilled just due to a number of priorities, and I can, and I can go through the, the items if you like, line by line, and talk a little bit about them or take questions, but a number of them are funding projects that we have committed to already, like a piece of the Here Is Home package, which includes our tiny home community, additional resources for our police that we're referencing, our police trust rebuilding plan announced in 2020, parks upgrades, additional support for arts and culture, Carroll Street redevelopment plan, and critical needs for our water infrastructure, new water meters. I'm happy to, to go through that list with you, we've got the experts in the room and take questions.
One of the advantages of providing everybody with the sheets ahead of time certainly helps, and I see some great things on here that we have been talking about for years. When you look at the, look down towards the bottom of the list, or the middle of the list, the playgrounds.
Yes.
The updating of the playgrounds. Long overdue. You know, it's just, and, and I will also say this, the goal of the, of the city, from my perspective, is not to see who has the biggest surplus and how big we can make it. The money from the surplus should be used to enhance and improve the areas for all citizens inside the city. So when you, when you do have an opportunity like we do now to have a surplus, I think that it's nice to see some of the things that we had, we've had on our wish list really come to fruition, so this is, this is good news. Does anybody else on the council have questions, specific questions about any of these?
Just, I mean, just some comments, you know, like, like you said, the playground equipment, the five hundred thousand dollars for tiny homes.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's gonna, that's gonna be great.
Right, Christine?
And then, you know, and then when you look at the, you know, getting into replacing the water meters and, and being able to get on the program that we have a goal to get on, that's, that's gonna help us, help get us there, so.
With all these new units, we're gonna need them.
Yeah.
Yeah, kidding, so.
We might be back for the later.
That's, that's great, great job on identifying things that affect various neighborhoods and throughout the city, so thank you for that.
Anything else?
Well, since Mira said about some of the most important things, I also see some more murals coming up, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
That's history in our communities and in our district, in our city, so we need those. Playgrounds are sufficient for our families, so that's one great thing that's happening, and also the historical markers, you know, I look at those things as being very important, very vital throughout the city. So the things we're doing, other than what Jack and Mira have specified, I see also what's coming to the city.
I'm just super excited to see the, the tiny homes project, I'm, I, it, I'm just so psyched, I really am. And also, you know, the, I'm, I'm always down for, for playground equipment, so... I'm really, I'm really glad to see that.
So I'm, I'm gathering that we have consensus to move this forward.
Yes.
Okay, Julie, could you please make sure this is on the agenda? Okay, that, um, pretty, that finishes up, um, the work session, uh, items. We do have a special meeting that is coming up that has been advertised properly, and um, I will entertain a motion to, uh, I don't need a motion, actually. I'll call the special meeting to order, and I'll save the comments for the end, okay, so for everybody. I'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask for a motion and a second to adopt a legislative agenda.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2698 for the second reading.
Some of...
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory.
Should we close the door? Is this a closed session?
No, this is open.
Oh, it's open, okay, I just wanna make sure, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2698, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2022 general fund budget to adjust the Salisbury Police Department's pay plan for the purpose of recruiting and retaining experienced officers and to be competitive with area agencies. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department has the need to provide police personnel with personal growth and career development, and whereas a career development program provides trained and experienced police personnel with skill enhancement opportunities. Whereas this department desires to provide every employee with the opportunity to realize professional fulfillment through personal and professional growth. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department needs to offer a competitive salary, pay scale, and career advancement program to retain experienced police professionals who are committed to increasing the department's ability to maintain a high level of operational readiness. And whereas an adjustment of the police department's salary, pay scale would result in better recruitment and better retention of experienced police professionals. And I'll therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2022 adopted police department's pay scale be and hereby is amended as follows. There is a schedule setting forth the adopted police department's pay scale that is amended pursuant to ordinance number 2698 below, and be it further ordained and enacted by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's police department's pay plan be amended, and this ordinance shall take effect on December 18th, 2021. This ordinance was introduced and read at a meeting of the Council of the City of Salisbury held on this, or held on the 22nd day of November 2021, and thereafter, saving the substance of the ordinance, having been published as required by law, was finally passed by the council on the 6th day of December 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
None.
All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2698 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2698 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, we'll now have, uh, some comments from, uh, the administration and then the council members. Ms. Glanz?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to extend, uh, a huge thank you, and I'm sure others will, uh, echo this, um, for the Salisbury, uh, Christmas parade yesterday. Uh, it was so nice to see many of you walking and waving, uh, and doing your, your, your special parade thing there. Uh, but the, the city team made a huge lift, along with the J.C.'s, um, and we're, we're really excited that it's back downtown. Um, so looking forward to, to growing that and making that a, a continued tradition in the heart of our community. Would like to mention that Ben Baker, our Deputy Director of Field Operations, is retiring after 31 years on Friday. Um, his, uh, party is at noon, I think, at Field Ops, if anybody's available to come, uh, but we wish him well and thank him for his many years of service with us. Um, and again, a huge thank you to Keith and the entire team at Finance. It is no small feat to, uh, get us to where we, we are, um, and to, to prepare all the documents along with, um, an upgrade to Munis that has been going on, um, and all of the day-to-day, uh, crazy things that happen in finance, so appreciate all of them. And, uh, I believe, uh, although he will be here next week, this is Michael's official last meeting with us. Um, so it was the last time we heard his voice reading a ordinance. Um, and we are gonna miss him immensely, uh, and his big brain, I like to say. But again, wishing, wishing Michael all the best, but, uh, knowing that he's not going too far, and he's gonna be doing great things for our community, so thank you, Michael. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Uh, yesterday, uh, it was great to see our city out in full force, enjoying the Christmas parade, it was a good time, and, uh, just it was a lot of fun, love. Just grateful to everybody.
April?
Well, I walked the parade, I actually walked the parade. The last time I walked the parade, I had to be rushed to the hospital.
Yeah, we remember.
Yeah, so, I actually walked the parade, and I even jogged and everything, I had a great time, I did, I had a marvelous time. But what I want to say today, I'm, spit, spinning off of Jack and Angela all the time about blood, our blood drive has been canceled due to insufficient, the people don't wanna give blood. And I don't understand why. We need donors, and I'm gonna try this one more time, probably in 2022, um, this blood drive, because I just can't believe that people, and I'm gonna say it, are so selfish that they won't give or won't donate, because it may be you in need of your own blood at any given time, as much as happening today, so I'm really upset about it, but I'm fine, because you can't make people do anything they don't want to do. So I'm begging you to donate, if you didn't wanna come to us to give the blood, please give to the Dumb Over Blood Bank, give to them, I mean, just, I'm afraid of needles, but I was willing to give, really, I was, I'm willing to give. Um, and then Saturday, I'll be having our Sacia's Senior Christmas Dinner and Gift Giveaway. Now, our list is cut off now because we have over 200 people seniors coming, so I'm getting ready to get off the mic, because I've gotta get home and finish doing what I'm doing. Everybody have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Angela?
Just sorry I missed the Christmas parade, but I certainly did see it online, it was wonderful.
We were thinking of you.
I did, I did, uh, see it on Facebook, it was wonderful. Um, just reiterating that if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Um, just wanna remind folks, please go get your boosters when we're going to visit family this holiday season up, coming up ahead, um, please, uh, please consider, you know, getting your booster shot. If you haven't already gotten vaccinated, please go get vaccinated, but if you already have, then you should be eligible to go get your booster, go get it. Um, you know, you might feel a little lousy, take, give yourself an extra day afterwards, after, after the shot, but it's worth it in the long run, you definitely don't wanna get COVID, especially with these variants that are going around, so, please just go get vaccinated.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask a favor of everyone. If everyone tonight, when they go home, would look at my Facebook page, there is a, uh, Blood Alert, uh, on there, and, uh, please share that with, with whomever. Uh, the more, the more we get it out there, maybe we can have some luck in getting people, and so if you have, if you, if you've seen it, or you can look it up, uh, and then please share it so that, uh, everyone, uh, hopefully can, can respond. I too had a great time at the parade, as did my, my wife and my daughter.
My, I'm on GPS.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, hope everybody has a safe, safe week, and we'll see you, uh, next, next Monday. We're adjourned.